I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like all the regular meetings and the headquarters of Commissioner to the Department of Commerce. Our first item of business is approval of amendments for our regular meeting on July 3rd, 2019, July 15th, 2019, and special meeting on July 23rd, 2019. I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. I'll second that motion by the chairman.
Okay, a motion has been made and properly signed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We got this passed.
I did not.
I've lost my pen.
I've got it actually.
Okay, thank you. I had it a minute ago because I wrote on that. Okay, the next item is agenda concerning adjustments to the agenda. At this time, I do have a couple of adjustments to make to the agenda. Under new business, we have add number eight, surplus truck to be sold. Number nine, ESLRLP, it is a grant process. And number 10, a litter resolution. Okay? And budget amendments, we have three to deal with today.
And under closed session, it's only personnel.
Okay.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the said adjustments. I'll second that motion for those three items.
Okay, and a discussion here or not, the agenda is approved as adjusted. At this time, we'll have the delegation, our first delegation, the auditor. We look forward to hearing his report for 2018.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is James Benz. I'm with Malden and Jenkins. I was the audit service partner for the June 30, 2018 audit. And I believe you all have a copy of our audit presentation in front of you.
Yes, sir.
And we're working through the technology of getting it up on the screen, but I think it's about as good as we can get right now. So what I'm going to do today is I'm going to re-evaluate the document as you guys get a chance. If you have any questions, Natalie has my contact information and you know, if you're more than welcome to reach out with any questions. But I do want to kind of get the highlights. And if any point in here, there's a slide to questions at the end, but if any point you want to just grab my attention, we can stop and go over anything. So I'm going to go to page two, which just gives a little information about our firm. We do about 30, now it's about 32% of what we do is serve local governments. We do governmental audits, we do them year-round, and we do them in eight states. We serve about 450 local governments. We have about 80 employees who spend all of their time year-round working with governments. So I'm a CPA, I don't know anything about taxes, we have an entire tax department that does that, but I spend all year working with local governments. So it is an industry that we are very heavily involved in. Adam Fraley was the ultimate engagement partner, he's signing the reports, and I was the audit service partner. I handled the audit and the relationship of that audit. On page three, as the independent auditors, we did perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards, which does not assess 100% of your transactions. Our objective is to issue an opinion as to whether or not the financial statements are materially correct. We sample and we test enough so that we can give such an opinion, and we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, and it states that the financial statements as prepared by management are materially correct in their presentation. And that's what was released to the state and approved by the state, as well as being released to the federal compliance entity. Your financial statements include the ABC board. We did not audit the ABC board, they contracted with their own auditors, and our opinion of the place to them relies 100% on their auditor's opinion. As part of the audit, on page four, we do review all the information in there, the numbers, the types of the subledgers, as well as the estimates management has made. The estimates and the accounting policies as the board are probably one of the areas that you want to make sure there's some comfort in, that your accounting policies are in line with other local governments, there's nothing unusual in your accounting policy to practice, and your estimates that are made by management, whether it be related to your capital asset appreciations, your pension liabilities, those estimates are reasonable as well and in line with industry norms. On page five, again, we are independent of management, financial statements and information included therein are management's responsibility. There were several audit adjustments posted this year, those adjustments were provided to management, they've been incorporated or are being incorporated into the system and reflected so that your financials will agree with the financial statements that were submitted. And although you'll see adjustments, we had a lot of adjustments this year, I think it was a very unique year for the county. Management was here, they worked really well with us in working and giving us the information. I did have a challenge, 2018 was the year you didn't have a finance director in-house that I created a bit of a challenge for your department, and that's a little bit reflected in the adjustments we had to make. But management did work with us and was able to get the reports out. On page seven, we're just going to hit a few highlights of the audit. Kind of the main fund most people look at, I may want to look at it, at a local government facility, the general fund. I'll look in there. The normal place to measure a general fund is to look at your fund balance, which is essentially your equity for that fund. And so we've got a four-year trend kind of where your fund balance has been compared to the annual expenditures, and you've got different categories in your fund balance, unassigned being the category that is quote really available for you to use going forward. You'll see the blue is your fund balance that's unassigned. June 30, 2018, you ended with about 9% of your annual expenditures still available in fund balance. That represents about 33 days of expenditures, so in short, you'd have about 33 days without generating any revenue of fund balance that you could use going forward. When you ask, how does that compare? GFWA is a national, Government Finance Officers Association, it's a national organization, not a lot of people when they do the cap, or that's who they submit to, they generally recommend you have about 45 to 60 days of the unassigned fund balance in there. So your June 30, 2018 is a little bit low compared to that mark, you're 33 day rate to 45 to 60. You can see on here, one of the big reasons, you know, obviously, you see your blue number, had been riding at about anywhere between 100 and 130 days in the past, and then this last year, we used a lot of general fund dollars to kind of support the wastewater project and the solid waste fund in general. The other big category that's on there, the green category, that's your state stabilization. State statutes require you to set aside a certain amount of your general fund reserves that you're not allowed to use in operations, and that's just the state goal of making sure everyone maintains a relatively healthy general fund. And it's going to be there, you can't touch it. By statutes, the number changes based on your cash and your expenditures for the year, so you'll see the percentages change every year, but it's going to be relatively about the same number. On page eight, just a quick snippet, your property taxes being one of your primary sources of revenue in the general fund. We look at the primary, we look at property taxes as it relates to the per capita numbers, and it's been fairly consistent, 2018, we did have a 7% increase in assessed values, and our notice rate was at .760. Page nine is the budget at a very high level for the general funds that remain to look at your revenues, expenditures, and then what we call, what the standards call your other financing sources and uses. And so you can see the amendments made throughout the year, we increased our revenues by about 340,000 of what we anticipate revenues to be, and increased expenditures about 800,000. At the end of the year, our budget for the general fund was to use about, I believe, 1.6 million of fund balance, and the end of the year, June 30, 2018, we actually used about 2 million of that fund balance. Expenditures, our revenues, you can see at the far right on that spreadsheet, they came in under budget, which was primarily driven by the change in the daycare transportation system. We didn't make budget amendment to reduce those revenues, though we did lose those revenues, offsettingly, we also lost the cost of that. So the expenditures, you'll see, were under budget by about a million dollars, and that is a lot dealt with the daycare costs going away, and then there were several capital projects in the shares fund, or the shares department, which didn't, a budgeted, but didn't have actual spending associated with it. On page 10, your enterprise fund, you have two, your landfill fund and your water fund. Generally with those funds, because of the type of activity they have, you always look at your cash flows for those funds. Cash flows for the year that were generated or used in operating activities, your landfill fund operated with a $200,000 loss, and the water fund actually generated about 800,000, almost 900,000 from operating activities. Where, in the water fund, where we like to see when you have those surpluses, what you like to see is it being reinvested in itself, and so you'll see that third section down there is your capital outlays. And so we spent about a million dollars this last year, 2018, on the infrastructure of the water fund. So obviously, that's reinvesting in the system, which hopefully produces the revenues going forward. So the water fund ended the year with a $1.5 million net increase to net position, but as we just talked about, about a million of that was added to capital assets, which although they are an asset, you have to liquidate that asset for future capital needs. On page 11, this last year, the state changed the way some of your federal programs were reported. In the past, all of the counties in the state have reported direct benefit payments on your schedule of federal and state awards. That reported you to have 11 million dollars of federal expenditures in the past. This year, they changed that, they took out the direct benefits off, and now you only report your expenditures that are actually flowing through your books, which is what I would say makes a little more sense. And it required you, this year, you report about 1.6 million. So you didn't see any change in your operations, but before you reported Medicaid benefits paid for the residents, even though that doesn't flow through your books, that's all paid directly by the state. So those went away, and that change across the state had a drastic effect on the number of programs looked at. So in the past, you guys have had one program, your Medicaid program, we audited every year by the auditors. With this change, now lowering the threshold, this year, we had three federal programs that were tested as part of the audit. And then also changed, and with a whole separate engagement, the state in 2018 required the auditors to do an agreed upon procedures for Medicaid, which we did, and submitted the information on testing the eligibility of Medicaid participants. That report was released in state in October 2018. In 2019, the state's taking that back in-house, and so the auditors of all the counties in the world are doing it, the state's going to be doing that with a statewide consultant doing all the eligibility testing. So the good news is most of that cost won't flow through to you no more. On page 12, for the next, I think it's about five, four, five slides, we've got the summary of the audit findings from this year. Anytime we have general injuries or, you know, first item segregation duties concerned, anytime there's a, with general injury, we have general injury that's over a certain magnitude, the standard requires that we report efficiency and control structure. So the next couple of slides, I'm just going to go through those items kind of in summary. All of this has been discussed with management, we're working with management to get all of these addressed to the best we can. Obviously, the first slide will take, probably take some time and some work, it deals with segregation duties, so anytime there's a limited number of employees in a situation, it's hard to ideally segregate all the responsibilities for an ideal control environment. So what it requires is the implementation of compensated controls to make sure that there's reviews in place to ensure that errors aren't occurring, whether it be intentional or unintentional, but just controls to be able to catch those situations. So the first one, as I said, is the segregation of duties finding. We had some issues in 2018 where we identified a lack of segregation in the bank reconciliation process, in the payroll administration process, and in just a general ledger, subledger monitoring process. And so we've been working with management to make sure that we give controls put in place to separate and/or to compensate that lack of segregation. On page 13, we had several audit adjustments that related to the equity reconciliation. So obviously, anytime you have a financial statement year rolled over, the equity is your role from last year's ending position to make sure you're starting at the correct position. And we had several funds that at the end of June 30, 17, when they rolled into 2018, the balances didn't agree to where they ended the prior year, and there were reconciliations that needed to go in place to be able to catch those differences and bring the accounts back up to where they should start at. A lot of this deals with, if you want to say, kind of a timing recognition, at the period of recognition, these were transactions that were in your general ledger, however, they were in the wrong fiscal period. And so there were adjustments to move them from June 30, 18 to June 30, 17, so that the activity would show the proper period, because we, if it was in the audit report for June 30, 17, it needs to be in your June 30, 17 general ledger versus your June 30, 18 general ledger. And so there were some big adjustments, but again, they all dealt with items that were recorded in your books, just in the wrong period of your books. Once we get equity reconciled, then we're auditing the activity of June 30, 18. We had some adjustments related to, you'll see there's two buckets here, your expenditures and your revenue recognition process. Again, kind of as I mentioned before, this deals with the timing of that recognition. These are items that, for the most part, as we do to cut off testing on June 30, 18, they were recorded in your June 30, 19 fiscal year, but related to June 30, 18. And so we brought those entries, those costs back to 18 in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards, principles, and those adjustments, because of that magnitude, had to be reported as such. On page 15, the general ledger maintenance deals with making sure your enterprise funds are being accounted for on a full accrual basis of accounting. So a lot of this activity is being recorded in the income statement or on subledgers, but not being recorded in the general ledger. And so as part of general ledger maintenance, the adjustments, the needs for these adjustments, a lot of this comes from our work with management, and then these general injuries that we have to post as part of the audit, is getting them in the books. Going forward, management, we've talked to them, they understand that they'll be making these entries as part of their closeout process rather than it being part of the audit process. We had an issue with the C-Book, which is the schedule of expenditures of federal and state awards. The timeliness of that being prepared, that was a new report, almost as if it's a new report. This is a report management's not been creating in the past under the independent standards. We have to give an opinion as to whether or not it's prepared in accordance with the, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and that reconciles through general ledger, so we can't be the entity that prepares that report. So we worked with management, it was a new process this year, they were ultimately able to get that for us, but it was a bit of a learning curve this year. So now we're working, now on making sure everything's getting compiled for 2019, and hoping this thing will be a lot more timely this year. Bank reconciliations, you know, we mentioned the segregation of duties last year. Bank reconciliations are only done by finance director. Again, you all didn't have that last year. When we showed up in June for the preliminary work, bank reconciliations were several months behind. They were able to get reconciled and were available for audit in October 2018 for the June 30 audit period. So that process, now you've got that position in-house, and we've already come to have done plenty of work for the 2019 audit, and it's up to date. We're in a much better position on that, but it was a, it was a control material weakness last year, obviously. We can't see June bank reconciliations till October. And then we had one non-compliance issue with state statutes dealing with budget adoption. I think there was just probably an oversight in how budgets get entered into the system. There was the general fund budget, the water fund budget, we had planned use of fund balance, but there was actually a requirement that you budgeted as a use of reserves, and so you'll, if you all remember back to the very high level snippet of the budget, we had an out of balance of about $700,000, but it was a planned use of fund balance, it just didn't get budgeted and approved as such. So we've discussed that for 19, but for 18, that's how it ended the year. We also have one recommendation, we've kind of been trying to emphasize this everywhere, obviously, in today's, today's environment, cybersecurity is a big risk for local governments. So making sure we've got controls in place to monitor and assess our framework and to run kind of tests to make sure our IT environment's working to catch that. There's been a lot of stories on the, on the news of governments getting hit with ransomware and all kind of information, so we want to make sure that practically you all are aware that that is a risk, and that we're taking steps to make sure we've got the framework in place to help minimize that risk for the county as much as possible. On page 18, and kind of going forward, you know, if you guys are having trouble sleeping tonight, we're just giving you a quick highlight of all the new accounting standards that are coming up over the next seven years. I'm not going to go through these with you all, we work with your management team to make sure they're aware of the new ones that are coming out. The big new one that's really got everybody a little bit up in arms is dealing with how to account for leases, but you guys still have a couple of years before that's applied, and building up to that will make sure management's taking the steps necessary to be aware of those, trained on those, and to implement those standards as a purpose. But you all making the decisions, obviously, the decisions you make can change what is and what may not be applicable from a standard standpoint, so we just want to make sure you have it available. And with that, that's all the presentation I have. If you all have any questions, we'll be happy to.
For the financial portion of the mention, there's a lot to process at this time, and of course, we knew some was in the front row coming into that. Commissioner?
I had, on page 11, you made a comment. See if I can express it properly. You said that we would have, we caused a change in the federal dollars, you know, going from 11.5 million to 1.6 million in the test. You said that, that that would lower our cost to us, is that, were you speaking about the cost of our daily work or the cost of the audit coming up?
The, the, so that's, that bottom section, the Medicaid, excuse me, there was a separate engagement that we did for the county, independent of the audit, where we did agreed upon procedures on testing the eligibility of Medicaid. That separate engagement is not going to be in place for 2019, the state's brought that in-house. So the audit, actually, the figure of, the audit with the change in the thresholds, I'd have to go back and look to see how many programs we quoted, but it more or less drove up the audit costs across the state, because everyone's having to test more programs now than they did in the past.
So what you're really saying is that in 2019 audit, the cost for doing those testing procedures won't, won't be, will be?
The audit procedure is correct.
Right, okay.
The three programs that we tested at the top, if we have to do three this year, you know, again, I have to go back and look, I don't remember what the contract says, we quoted a number of programs that it included, it was probably two or three if I had to guess, based on your size.
It's just that we will not have a direct benefit payment.
The Medicaid eligibility testing at the bottom, correct.
Yeah, last year, we signed a separate agreement for an additional, I can't remember if it was eight or 14, between eight and 14,000 dollars for them to do the Medicaid testing. So we will not have a separate agreement for those estimated costs for this audit.
Good size of number. That's a lot of work, yeah. But I think, I think, so off the record, my assumption is that it was a mix-up from the state of having a lot of people doing eligibility testing, getting a lot of varying results, and I know a lot of county people are complaining that that was a new cost last year, and a lot of voices probably going to the state about the cost of having to absorb that.
And Natalie, our contract with Malden, did we do a multiple year contract?
When we put out the RFP, it was for one year, and then we had the option to renew, so we did renew, and we can renew, but I can remember it was three to four years.
And did, you did say that it would be available to answer questions, I think we studied this and we talked to him, and it's, I want to, she can get, you can touch the pen.
Okay.
Anything else, could Mr. Freeman?
Well, I don't know, I really, looking at this for the first time today, I've been able to sort of any of it. However, one thing that, that I was concerned about when you went over this was the non-compliance of state statutes. Does that affect the county in any way on borrowing or expenditure?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, if you habitually made a habit of it, I don't know, the LGC may take a different stance on that, but we've seen it, not directly, you know, at one time, a spin-off situation, but, but that's, I don't know that there's a definitive answer, I can just say from my experience, yeah.
But it is a perpetual finding, it might cause us a problem.
I, I would imagine, you would hope continued non-compliance has a great perception.
And the LGC is going to be here, and that was part of my interest right away, but it will be our September 16 thing. They're going to be here, except though.
So that was just basically defined as an overhaul, not something that we were doing.
I would, I would think so. And again, given the circumstance of where you were at this point in time in 2018, without the finance rating position, you know, trying to do these things in-house, our point of view is yes, it was, it's a finding because it's material, and under state law, you're required to formally budget that usage in most other states by using that number as a balancing figure, it sort of seemed. So I don't think it's a negative long-term thing for the county, but that's the question for the state, I would say.
Sure, well, thank you. As I, I'm having a chairman on page 12, it was going over this, and I was reading along, segregation of dues, I have a question on it, but I did make a note, maybe something we need to address now.
It's already been addressed, and some of that, when we discussed with some of this, that had to do with the new software and levels, and we've already made changes on quite a few of those things.
Well, thank you. And looking forward to your work this year, and hopefully we get our audit moved soon.
That is our plan.
And that's our plan too. Thank you. Okay, I don't like the allegations. Okay, we have one person signed up, Nancy Figg. They come to say your name and address, and comments, I'll leave you five notes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Nancy Felix, 206, Carter Road, Big Hill, Mount Carolina, 798. I'm a chairman, this is when I'm supposed to ask about, make a comment. Does it have to do with the water bill change? I was seeing a water bill, and the landfill amount wasn't put in with the usual water amount bill. And I asked where, and I was told that the amount we put as a one-time bill on our yearly tax, and it's about time for it, and it would start now, isn't it, who'd make the decision to put one bill on for the whole year at the last minute without citizens knowing? Because we have a senior citizen who can't even pay for her regular medicine, you know, people paying 300, 400 dollars a month just for one bill. And the idea of them getting a bill, I think it's August, September, when our tax comes out, with that lump sum put up there, they're having trouble just doing regular things. Why do they do that, and why wasn't it announced to the public and extolled? I'm sorry, I didn't find out about it.
We normally, my chair, we normally receive comments from the, from the podium, and we don't always debate those things back and forth, we certainly respond to them, you know, the phone call, or matter, or follow them at the next meeting. Would you do anything to Natalie on that? If it's the first time? It is the first time.
Thank you.
I will say, the cost to the, to the residents of the county would be an exact same, it's just that the method of collection is different. The solid waste, as you heard, was running in a deficit. The people, it was on the water bill, and the people who do not have county water got a quarterly bill for solid waste. But if they did not pay, there was no way that we could collect it from them. And the county policies said that it should be on the, it should be on the property tax bill. So that's where it is going to be, and of course, we do have ways to collect taxes for people who not paid for it. So a person really is not going to pay any more. Your water bill will be reduced because the solid waste is taken off. The solid waste is going to be added to the tax bill, and this has been discussed during the last year because of the problem with the deficit and the solid waste fund. We were running a deficit that just stated up later. Yeah, it was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we, you know, we can't afford to not, we've got to pay back.
What I'm saying, if you do it this month, and the bill for the whole year for your taxes is coming next month, someone on a fixed income has no way of coming up with that amount all at once, wouldn't even spread it along the whole year.
If I may, the Title V public works of the Gates County Code of Ordinances under Chapter fifty has a solid waste ordinance that was passed many years ago. And in 2006, the commissioners at that time voted to remove it from the property tax bill and do it monthly. I brought to their attention that the ordinance had never been changed, and that was brought up last budget year, and when they decided to, we brought it again this budget year so we could be in compliance with our ordinance. And so it was discussed at some of the budget meetings, and the commissioners did vote that it goes back on the tax bill effective July first. And, give me a moment to get down to this second section. It talks about the fee schedule, and it says, Chapter fifty point twenty-nine, in accordance with General Statute one hundred and fifty-three A dash two hundred and ninety-three, the landfill user availability fee imposed under General Statute one hundred and fifty-three A dash two hundred and ninety-two shall be billed with property taxes, shall be payable in the same manner as property taxes, in case of non-payment, shall be collected in any manner by which delinquent personal or real property taxes can be collected, and the fees are leaned on the real property described in the bill that includes the fee. And that was originally passed June sixth of nineteen ninety-three. And there is a penalty that goes along with that, as it just stated, as with any other property taxes that are not paid. And the fee schedule is outlined in the county fee ordinance, which is online as well. But I know Ms. Lane might can address the more of that during her tax report, whenever we get to that as well.
Is there an option for senior citizens who are going to be shocked to find out they have to put on their tax? Or do you have not, don't have money scheduled for it?
As I said, there's, there's payment options that Ms. Lane can address during her department report in greater detail.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all, we'll call a comment. Moving to a administrative report, somebody is trying to...
This is for June twenty-first through July nineteenth. Waste water project, and I see Mr. Hedges, this is not here, I was going to ask, oh, thank you, I'm sorry. He can provide an update on what is considered substantially complete. I would probably get it wrong, but it is now considered substantially complete. Work continues at the historic courthouse. DOT has indicated funding is not available, and I do have a letter that I will read from DOT. We are receiving the letter dated June seventh, two thousand and nineteen, to Mr. Jim Hoagley, North Carolina DOT, Gates County Engineer, seeking funding for the replacement of the sidewalk along Court Street and Church Street. In order to fully evaluate this request, we will need a detailed line item estimate along with a typical section and plan sheet indicating proposed work. Currently, the only possible funding source is federal highway transportation alternative funding to bring ramps and small sections of connecting sidewalk into compliance with the ADA. These funding requests require that North Carolina Department of Transportation Board of Transportation Action, it could take several months to go through the approval process, provided the project qualifies for these funds. In addition, the following would need to be addressed if funding is authorized to the county to be eligible for reimbursement. An agreement between the county and North Carolina Department of Transportation must be executed prior to requesting bids for the project. Documents must comply with and incorporate the DOT standard specifications and applicable federal provisions. Bid documents must be reviewed and approved by DOT in writing prior to advertisement. Bidders must be pre-qualified with DOT at the time of bidding. The DOT Historical Architecture Unit must review the site and post work to determine impact. As a result of multiple disasters hitting our state in recent years, the department has encountered significant unanticipated expenditures which have limited our available funds. As such, the department must reduce spending across all programs and only perform critical functions necessary to ensure the safety of the traveling public. Once we receive the information requested, we will perform a more in-depth review to determine the feasibility of the TAF funding. We regret that we cannot provide you with a more favorable, favorable response at this time. Do you have any further questions or concerns? Please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Gretchen Byron, Division Project Development Engineer.
But there are some steps to be taken to see if we could receive these, I mean, apply for these funds.
And she indicated in that letter, and when I was on the phone with her, that that would take several months.
I see that last paragraph there on the bottom, about the multiple disasters. It pretty much tells us that the funds aren't there. And then when I look up here with the specifications, I see the advertising and I think we would have to advertise for bids, we'd have dollars out there, dollars spent, and unlikely to get, to get the dollars from the DOT.
Well, they have to approve before we advertise.
All right, they have to approve everything.
But we wouldn't have been spending any of it if they didn't approve it.
And the historical, and the historical architecture unit must approve it as well.
Wonder if that unit can come and take a look and give recommendations anyway, if that is an experience. We can kind of see what they say.
I've never even heard that division of DOT until I've received this letter, I'll be honest, so I'd have to find out who to contact.
That must exist.
Yeah, they have to.
They don't come to the RPODs or something like that.
I think we could investigate a little bit more, let's see. I mean, what about spending any money? I just see, only thing I can say is that...
Okay. I'd be, I'd be in favor of following, taking the next steps and getting it looked into prior to spending any money.
Yeah.
Advertizing.
I'm on the two other county managers and two city managers spoke to the lead for North Carolina students about our roles and responsibilities in local government on July sixteenth in Chapel Hill. Do you have any questions?
Well, well, that was referring to my aunt, would you, would you ask, speak, I guess, is that representative rule of Carolina?
Yes, everyone else had at least ninety thousand or more people there.
And is it, is it video or?
No.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm sure.
I'd like to acquire that video.
This is a new program. And also, on September the sixteenth, it is on your calendar at five thirty, Park of Extension will do the report to the people and provide dinner at the extension office. And at seven o'clock at that meeting, Sharon Anderson and Susan McCollum from the Local Government Commission will be here to address commissioners.
Okay, well, thank you for that update. Any questions for county manager? Hearing on, we'll go to Ms. Lane in the tax report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We had an opportunity to see the initial collector's report from July. Any particular questions as we look, we have a pretty good for July, ahead of the tax billing, over forty-one thousand collections for the month. Some other funds came in through Zakiya's, almost four thousand for that, the total collections. Any particular questions or observations?
So the percentage for this year is the total percentage of tax collected before last?
Yes, ma'am, that we ended off, I'll say with the book, it was a little over ninety-six point four nine percent, if I recall. Yes, we ended the year, yes, ma'am. Ninety-six point four nine ending off with the fiscal year end. There was write-offs, of course, for two thousand and eight, total real and motor vehicles that we wrote off, of course, was a little over twenty-six thousand by tradition. So ninety-six point four nine percent, that's where we, we ended off, yes.
So to ask a question about write-offs, that's out and win, never, no recourse to ever collect, correct?
That is correct. By the thought, well, General Statute merely says you cannot use enforced collections ten years of one delinquency, but by our camp standards, like most counties, when you do your fiscal year-end process, it grabs that in our two thousand and eight bill, and it, it does a automatic cumulative write-off of all those bills. Oddly enough, our foreclosure sale had a delinquent two thousand and eight bill that we were not able to capture by our standard. Because we did that, it ran automatically on like Friday afternoon, Saturday morning for this year. So that property that we had up for foreclosure sale, by standard, defaulted to a write-off, yes, sir, so.
So if, if there was a parcel in the, within this write-off that had a house on it, and that property is sold in two thousand and twenty-two, is there going to be a lien on that property?
If, if there are other years of delinquency, but if it's a date or, or something, every year...
Even so, a lien, where taxes are concerned, a lien that is, a tax that's over ten years old, comes off as a lien on that property?
That, that is correct. Even drainage, fire fee, anything related to that. And in this case, as we approach this year, any solid waste, of course, we wouldn't have bill for that, but if it were the occasion of a nineteen bill with solid waste delinquency, of course, we would not be able to capture that, that's...
Collect, I expect you to have the answer to this question, I'm going to add it anyway.
Okay, that's all right.
So we're talking about two thousand and nine coming up, being ten years old. Do we know what the anticipated write-off for that year will be?
We've been pretty consistent. If we look through the snapshots in time, fourteen, fifteen, my tenure here at Gates, the write-offs actually have been pretty consistent. Twenty-four, twenty-five thousand a year, that's combined EMV and personal property, your mobile homes, and keep in mind that also incorporates your older vehicle bills that we were not able to, and we stopped billing in two thousand and thirteen, you know, through, when EMV took over. That includes a total. So we, we've been pretty consistent. I looked not long ago at the snapshot of the write-offs, and they're, you know, they don't really exceed into the thirty to forty thousand. They're all mid twenties, twenty-four, twenty-three thousand, average consistent. You know, of course, those write-offs, naturally, the better is always the goal, but we've been pretty consistent in ending write-offs and everything, yes, sir.
And not all of these are real estate. Some of them are...
Oh, yes, a good bulk of them. For this year, as I mentioned, the motor vehicles were well over fifteen thousand that we wrote off, that we tried to capture that, send a bill and incorporate it in reminder, and they said, well, I totaled that car in a wreck, I have it, and guess what? They're unlikely, you know, to pay that. A good bulk of it, you know, we're talking about for real, and, and with the incorporated just a little over ten thousand, ten thousand and fifty-three.
Which are doing a much stronger job.
Absolutely, with that real property. So that's, that's a good thing.
And even your comment on fifteen thousand is in motor vehicles and things like that, and some of that is interest.
Oh, yes, most definitely.
On top of that, too.
Yeah, yes, indeed, yes.
All right, thank you.
Tax bills, a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When will they be going out?
Anticipate in the next couple of weeks, that we finalize the solid waste, we'll be back on for an annual bill statement, you know, for our chance, unlike the water bill system, we don't have opportunity, we, we capture it in our annual tax notice. There's been a lot of questions, everybody's been fielding those questions from taxpayers. We're not going to, you know, naturally bill it in in April for some unique event, we're going to bill everything cumulative, will appear according. You know, if you pay that bill, two hundred and forty total on your tax bill, that's our bill. Or if you get an exemption, much the same, you'll still, as you touched on, Chair Hoffman, you'll still have the same amount. If you receive an exemption, those exemptions still will be in place as they appear on your tax notice, yes, ma'am. Next couple of weeks, working real hard to get those finalized, and, yes, ma'am.
And people understand there are exemptions that you can give, there is a process you have to go through, and the paperwork has some knowledge, authority of...
That is correct. And you must qualify for that homestead exemption or exclusion or the veterans in order to receive that reduction, as was always the case with the water department. That policy still is in place. So if we don't have an application on file, and you're not currently receiving any exclusion, you're not unfortunately going to be able to see that reflected in the solid waste. It won't, it won't cut that bill in half as we typically would see, yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And the bill is from August, the, for the landfills, we've August through July, correct?
That is correct. I mean, bill cycle, yes, ma'am, to capture the entire amount. We're not going to have a quarterly paraded portion amount, it's not going to go through December. That's been a lot of questions, too. I paid my quarterly bill, you're not going to bill me X, Y, Z, but we don't have that luxury. We have to capture it in the annual, much like was the case years ago, more than a decade, it, it was billed accordingly on the parcel of land. I, you know, if you've got only a single wide, that, again, I want to just touch on the fact that it's going on the parcel. We don't have any method because it is the landfill tax solid waste, much like when we go out for new construction visits, there is a item now included on our property record card, just for knowledge, that we're going to be able to see that and code that. So if you're out sketching that new house, you know, a fire fee, a solid waste fee, as a reminder, when that CO is done, certificate of occupancy, it's going to tag your solid waste. So we're going to be consistent moving forward. It's been a lot of questions, and I know it's, you know, you're getting it back on the tax notice, but yeah, it's a good point, thank you.
And the people at the tax report, we, we've been talking about how to transfer that money that you paid for July, August, and September, how to transfer and what to do with your August and September payments so that the tax office can get them. And those are internal things. So you will have a credit, so to speak, when you go to pay your taxes, instead of paying the two forty, or the one twenty, if you have the exemptions, it'll be a hundred for the two twenty.
Yes.
Or the two hundred, depending on how much you pay, if you pay your quarterly bill.
Yeah, if you already captured that portion, yeah. And those are unique. I want to thank, you know, Customer Service Supervisor Diane Hendricks for getting some pretty thorough spreadsheets to break those down. My task now is, you know, we need really to finalize and make sure everything looks appropriate. Those have to be handled, you know, uniquely, if you do pay on a quarterly basis there. We don't want to capture the full amount in some cases with, with moving forward. But we appreciate everybody's patience, certainly the tax department with the transition and everything, we appreciate it.
And if you have a question, go to the tax office.
Yes, that is correct. But for any prior delinquent amounts, you still need to follow up with customer service that, let's say you, you know, we're delinquent on some prior amounts, we're not going to capture that in our tax system. First of all, we don't have any capability of how to capture it within our collection system. And secondly, you know, having been billed from the water department maybe three months ago, maybe they left the dwelling, it was a rental, the water was in their name, they never paid, they're still getting a late notice, they need to follow up with customer service, that's not a tax...
So can they, I mean, twenty eighteen?
That is correct. Well... That is correct, well, ma'am.
Well, from July nineteen.
Nineteen with some of this.
Revenue year of twenty eighteen. I mean, if they were delinquent, then you go to Customer Service.
The last billing event with the Customer Service Department, any questions they would have had for that, because we're not going to be pretty, you know, to know who goes on. This is certainly moving forward.
I misspoke, but I know, I meant, I know what I meant, but I misspoke.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any additional questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Okay, we do have two refunds, I hope you got those.
Oh, yes, that's right.
I wanted to, if they were not in your report, however, two EMV refunds that were submitted on behalf of the taxpayer, I want to go ahead and get those on this meeting.
Okay. And the first one is the, what am I, a ten dollars and fifty-six cents?
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Is, it was in our book. Okay, and it is for a car that had been sold and tax turned in. All of the proper documentation is included in what's through. What is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I'll make a challenge, this reimbursement placement refund, number one, two hundred and ten point five six dollars, be approved.
Okay. A motion's been made and seconded in the formal discussion. Here, none of all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. None for the number two. This one is for one hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents. It is also a camper this time that has been treated in, or new one, and the tax has been turned in. Once again, all the proper documentation is here.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve this refund as well. Number two?
And I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion's been made, properly seconded in discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the refund of one hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents for the tax bill on two, say aye?
Aye.
That is also approved.
All right, thank you so much.
And I believe we will, next month, we'll have someone else giving the report.
Yes, ma'am. I'm not sure if that will be referred to the county manager. I do want to thank the Board of Commissioners.
Well, we want to thank you for the job you have done.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry if this didn't really.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I've enjoyed working with the department staff and it's been a pleasure, it's been a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Department of Court. Are there any questions that the Commissioner has?
No, they may have none.
Ms. Franklin?
I don't have any.
Okay. I don't believe I have any as well. Okay, moving, we have no public appearance today, no old business, we'll go off to new business. The first item on that is Economic Improvement Council, we need to go to our package, and there is a letter, yes, there was a letter, it should be the first document. From James Jones. Would you like to read this letter?
The Economic Improvement Council no longer needs the county commissioner's appointment in order to fill our board requirements. We greatly appreciate you, all the county commissioners for your assistance in the past, however, as a result of our board restructuring. Restructuring is no longer necessary.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about that.
What's going to change the structure and what does that mean for us?
I did not know the company, that the person who signed it is the CSBG Director, Dr. James Jones. So I don't know if there's been, but also Dr. Mason is still on there, so I did not know because I have not communicated with Gates County any sort of restructuring.
We've had the input, basically, that way.
Okay. The next is a request for award retreat.
The, there are documents from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners in your packet that starts with County Resource and Outreach Services. Neil Emery and David Nevilleson worked together to facilitate retreats for county boards and board leadership development, and I would like to request that the Board of Commissioners consider this for the, to take place within the next few months. I've spoken very briefly with Neil Emery about this. He said that once the commissioners agree that they feel that one is needed, they can then work to develop an agenda and it can be a one-day retreat, it could be a two-day, depending on what all is needed, but the purpose would be to conduct it, as it states on here, expanded instructional programs regarding the roles, responsibilities and relationships between the Board of Commissioners and other county officials and partner to plan and facilitate retreats.
This is a service provided by NCAHC.
Yes, and it is free.
And it's, that's, I love that here, though. Well, I think it would be probably a good thing to have some, a third party come in and, you know, get us to think about how we do things.
We've got three, I don't, certainly we could, they've got three of five here, and of course, as far as a date or anything like that, we have to get with those scheduled.
Well, we also didn't get the date scheduled.
Right, he said it would take at least a month because of the planning and others that they already have scheduled.
So they'd be developing the agenda with?
A combination. If you have certain topics that you would like for them to touch upon, they can do that. And then I believe they kind of, Mr. Emery and I, so in the past, have had the templates, so to speak, that they follow as they work with any future boards, but then they try to personalize it to your needs.
All right, so what, have any additional counties or adjacent counties been involved in it?
I know that they have, they did a retreat for, I believe it was Chauan County back in budget time, because they also helped facilitate budget discussions.
I think they did, can.
Let's say, it seems like Mr. Emery had said they've been somewhere else up here recently, but I do know, I do know that they've done this on an ongoing basis.
I think each county is different in a way, even though we're all have a lot of similarities, we're all so different. It might be that we could get more, maybe insight on our concerns or how to do things.
And this would be, maybe three hours, a morning?
Typically, the one to two days. Once again, it depends on the agenda and how many topics you would like to discuss.
Is there an exam at the end of?
No, it's a, um.
Do you want us to consider with your comment?
Yes. Also, this is not for necessarily to be considered with the board retreat, but I've spoken with someone with economic develop, might just look like to the name of it, but it's the Public Private Partnership with North Carolina Economic Development, and it's been recommended that I contact Lee Paddock and Chris Chung, who is the Director of that organization, to come down and speak with the commissioners because of economic development concerns that seem to have been brought up, and so that they can let everyone, not just commissioners, but also the public, know what industries and businesses are looking for when they move to a community.
The, this part here, what I'm looking at, maybe what potential agenda might be by looking at the, if I'm clear, would be, would be a private retreat, right?
Right, it's just with commissioners.
Right, but the economic development part would be like an open meeting.
Correct.
Could we, if we, if we agreed to do this, could we also get the economic development, maybe that person to, to work with us during that retreat and he come present also to?
I can ask, I'm not, the person I contacted, I knew he had changed jobs, so that he was able to believe you to the correct people, so I've not reached out to Mr. Paddock or Mr. Chung, but he said based on what they have done in other counties, that they would be willing to talk to whatever such group.
All right. On your recommendation and Ms. Hoffman's comments, I would, I would agree that we'll proceed with a date.
At least it gets them to get, yeah, cool. Do I have a second?
Roger, second.
Okay, well, instruct the county, all, first of all, end of the formal discussion. All those in favor say aye? Will instruct the county manager to continue to reach out to these services and come up with some dates for us, and we can, we can see what we can do.
Good, thank you for the idea.
Yeah, learning, looking at things with new set of eyes, this is very helpful sometimes. Okay, we do have a budget amendments. The first one, Mrs. Island is with the Altor today, it's gone with that, so county manager's going to do budget amendments. The first one is number two.
At the first July meeting, you approved a budget revision with the number two, but following some discussion with the Alters when they were here last week, it was discovered that actually it should have been prepared differently. And so that is what budget revision two, and then it says dash REV, that's the person that's in your book. It's still to carry forward the funds from recurring emergency management grants, but it should have the optional money, which we received from the state, reduces the overall expenditures, and the way it was presented was an increase instead of being shown as a negative on the budget worksheet that you have, so it is to correct that, so the amount that's funded balance is actually seven thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I would move to approve that. Is budget provision two REV, that's?
Yes, sir.
Budget provision two dash REV.
Second that motion.
Motion's been made, properly seconded, and this will clean up the situation a little more by it. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, that passes.
Budget five, provision five in your separate packet that you received, because of the additional OPEL reports that were needed for the audit and the increase in cost, we did not budget enough for contracted services to cover these OPEL reports. So budget provision five is to move money from the hospitalization line where a new employee did not need county's insurance, move that from hospitalization to contracted services to pay for the OPEL reports.
The EV is employee benefits, OP is?
Other personnel.
Okay. Thank you, boss.
But I can answer.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that budget revision number five be approved. And I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made, properly seconded in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, that passes.
Budget amendment six is to correct an error that was discovered and paid for a solid water employee, and there are documents attached. The employee had some questions about payroll transaction and an error was discovered, and this is to allow them to be paid for that error.
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that that be, the documentation is here, I've read that, that certainly fits the standards, so budget revision number six.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded in formal discussion, so we want to correct errors. All those opposed, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, that is approved. Okay, now we have a surplus truck.
This truck has been light used by building the grounds, it was actually used by inspections for many years before, and the original paperwork does have a recommendation with the scan that the world, I wrote it on there. I do agree that it needs to be sold, there are some issues with the truck and with an opening bid, five hundred dollars in reserve.
Yes, GovDeals.
GovDeals, yes, sir.
And this is two thousand and four, so it's got some page on it.
That's GovDeals dot com.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that be approved.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made, seconded, and all in formal discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay. Now, the next one is ESFRLP.
This is the Essential Single Family Real化ation Law Call nineteen grant that we have received. The North Carolina Housing Finance Agency requires that the assistant policy and the procurement policy that are attached be approved by the county. There, as you can see in there, there's a few little spots that have been highlighted with changes that we will send forth to my coordinate, this program manager for this, this procurement and disbursement policy and the assistance policy is basically the one that we currently use for the DR and the sixteen grants as well. And Ms. Lawrence will be heading up the project for nineteen.
My program is not highlighted, the changes.
No, it's not highlighted, they're straight through.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And basically, it has to do with, it said we had a TV station here.
Oh, yeah.
And we changed, ended up, and they recommended changing, Dave being from the state recommended allowing more time from the opening of the bids to notification of the program to allow us time to talk to the contractor and thoroughly review the bids in a more proper fashion before selecting one.
Okay, that's from seventy-two hours to seven days.
Correct.
Okay, and this, Single Family Rehabilitation Line, certainly would help kind of address one of the needs of substandardizing that get us up to court.
And if it's approved today, the applications can be made public any on the eighteenth at our office.
Madam Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve this document and get it to the board.
I second that motion.
Very well, for the Gase County Assistant Spot.
That's right. Any discussion? Certainly, we would always try to do things that we can help make this a better community for all citizens. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, it passes, so you can get that done. Our recognize Commissioner Owens at this time.
Well, I asked upon arrival this morning to add something to the agenda last year, sometime, we had some citizens come to the podium talking about the litter in the county, and I remember Commissioner Freeman, you. And I remember Commissioner Freeman, you and Ms. Hopple both had something to say about that, I think we all did. And we were concerned about that time, there was some people that shared with us what they had done themselves as individuals. And so I was thinking that I would like for the board to consider adopting a resolution concerning litter issues in the county. And every county has, they're pretty easy to find. But I would like for us to draft a resolution, county manager shared with me that she knows there are some templates out there. But in our resolution, I would like for us to consider adopting a week, like a second week of each month, of each month. Not a one-time resolution, but a continuing resolution that has life that goes forward. And possibly, in that resolution, say that the second week of each month, or the second week of each even-numbered month, you know, something like that. Something that wouldn't be too much of a burden, but something that other civic organizations, classes, school system, churches, or just families could look at it and say, hey, I'd like to be a part of that. And encourage the people to take photographs.
Before and after?
The before and after, or show how many, that they had 75 bags of trash that they picked up. But I'd like for us to formulate, consider formulating a resolution to be adopted out of county. And something that in the future, we can recognize the success of. So if the board would agree to continue to work on, begin to work on a resolution, I think the citizens can appreciate it.
Like a great idea.
I know that some of the counties do have a special day or a special weekend or cleanup. And certainly, we could do that, you know. So you want us to have a resolution, maybe by next meeting, to directly, or come up with a resolution?
I think we could do that with county manager emailing us maybe two or three templates that she's aware of that already exist. And then we could strike or send in things to add to it, that to take away, whatever. I think we could do that, let's see, September?
Have to.
A second meeting, that one, is that saying?
And I don't know if we want to think, I don't even know if it's the reality, if we could involve our rural clubs and all of our partners to take our responsibility, if you will, to have their citizens in an area, have it particular road or highway.
Well, I know that certain ones already have adopted highways, I know that some of those with rural things, the roads and some very, so very.
And Gags is the same thing.
And Gags, but that's the same. But encourage, and just have a designated weekend that everybody can get out and clean up. Okay, do we need a formal action or just a direct?
A direct would be okay with that.
I think a direct would be fine as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Okay, any other new business, I believe that's all on my agenda. We do have citizen comments. Does anyone have, like to have citizen comments at this time? Ten?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a little bit more explanation on substantial completions on the waste board. There's a few small punch list items, free board reader stick, he's to go in, so he'll actually, we surveyed out levels, or in free board available. Some seeds around a lagoon. They have tied in at Honey Pot, so now we are valid off, so we can send it to the old system on Honey Pot or the new system. So I'd say we're at 99.2% complete. Structure-wise, infrastructure, that's good, it's just small ticket items, just to wrap or clean things up.
And when do you anticipate this checkoff list being included?
I think we should be able to come online within the next 30 to 45 days. Biggest thing is make sure the state's satisfied, they have come down, done an inspection, very pleased with what they've seen. I have also got in contact with somebody that cuts hay, that will cut the hay for the hay. No expense to us, because that's one thing we do not want to do is get into hay business. So that's a substantial savings that will not be a cost per company.
And they would have to do it on a regular basis?
Yes, this is someone that cuts hay and for hay, they have cattle. They've kind of made it a business and it worked out good, because they're getting rid of some of their land they have in Virginia and trying to consolidate close to the county. So it was just good timing when I made contact with them. Other thing, what you brought up about trying to set up a week a month or every other month. I don't know if you've noticed, but DOT's contracted the grass cutters, they cut the shoulder. They have incorporated on their major highways that they are responsible for cleanup crew and picking up trash from those. So that's one thing, you know, we've had a lot of issues with DOT downsizing, like how all of the work's out. But they have incorporated that, if you notice that somewhere close to the Movers, now you're seeing six guys behind them, both sides of roads, picking up trash and filling up bags.
And they do the major ones, like 32, 158, 37?
32, 37, yeah, major highways. So that is something that DOT has stepped up and included in their vehicle grass cutter.
Well, that's great. And I've seen them out, but of course, we have a lot of secondary routes that need help.
Secondary routes, it's once again, rather than much, less popular.
And thank you for that.
No, that's, that's good.
Okay, thank you. Looking forward to have that waste water online. Okay, no citizen comments, commissioners comments? Start with Commissioner Freeman.
Thank you, Matt. First, I'd like to bring forth an item for additional revenue. We mentioned Jack the lovely dog, who is probably very well established in various communities. Certain ones, again, I think that is additional revenue for the county. Others, I'd certainly thank all of our citizens who are calling and concerned about, and we've heard that this morning too from the podium, about putting the landfill charges on your tax bill. Heard from a lot, I'm sure a lot of concern. It had been discussed, it had been talked about, and citizens have contacted me and I've talked with. Done the best I can to explain with the onset and the fact that they are in fact possibly taking care of other folks that don't pay their landfill bill. And that's been occurring for a long time. And another county manager, as well as your board, have addressed that issue on how to make sure that everybody's being treated fairly. So that is something that has come forth, and has been numerous phone calls, including media with someone for at least an hour this morning, discussing that same thing. So glad to hear that brought up today, and certainly glad to hear the comments from our chairman and county manager. Others, I want to thank you for your attendance and the support that you give this county, so thank you.
Well, I wanted to touch on that comment too. My wife opened the water bill, and she said, what is this? She noticed that it looked different. But anyway, what we're doing there is, we're doing what you want us to do. We're making sure that everybody's treated equally and fairly, and that everybody is supporting, you know, any system that we have, water system, waste system, whatever, that everybody is participating in that, so that the burden, you know, one individual, one company, one taxpayer, whatever. So all of that is about fairness, unfortunately, there's a big deal that gets combined out there. But anyway, that's the proper way to do it. And we did a lot of looking and looked for the best way, and what we proposed is the best way. Thank you all for being here today. Good to see you.
I thank all for coming. Certainly, we've tried to address the situations, we could not afford to continue to have a deficit in the solid ways. We had to look to recapture those who were not paying, and the tax field is what was in our ordinance, so that's where we went. And there is a judgment period for all of us, and so we appreciate your patience. But we are trying to make sure that everyone pays their fair share, and it's just not burdened on the people who have the water, the paper, solid waste, that all county residents should pay for solid waste. At this time, I also like to, you know, if you have concerns, call us or email us, or we've certainly, or see us in the grocery store. We certainly will stop and talk to you. And if we don't know the answer, which a lot of times we don't, we will investigate and try to come up with an answer for you. Thank you for your attendance, I asked you to continue to pray for Commissioner Jordan. He has some health concerns, and we just keep him in our prayers each and every day. And have a wonderful rest of the day, I believe. Our next meeting will be after, in September, on September the 9th, because likely the day is September the 2nd.
November 4th.
The 4th. Oh yeah, we do it all the same, I was thinking of Monday.
But I may have something to mention.
Okay.
In case someone has not seen the road closure, Buckland Bridge is closed. The DOT sent me a message that said through November the 3rd, it could be longer, and there are detour signs. And from what I'm saying, Ex Bank Road is still, it is back open.
That was just yesterday, that cross line was closing.
And the Bostrom Road?
It's still closed. The anticipated date originally was this week, we've not received any.
But it's getting close, I glanced down there, and it looks like it's very close to opening. Okay, thank you for coming, we want to take.
If I can interrupt you one moment, Madam Chairman. One thing that I failed to mention and had wanted to, it's getting my favor of mind. That is that Emma Lane, representing the county, once again, with her team, won first place in Switzerland, and for representing horse racing. And it's, and it'll probably be, or they're trying to get it at least in the Olympic society, so.
Wonderful news. At this time, would be a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made, properly seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute recess, so that we can. Change order. At this time, we will entertain a motion for come out of closed session.
So move, second motion.
Motion's been made, properly seconded, in discussion, here and now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I do have a motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
Motion's been made, properly seconded, discussion, here and now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.